...
... at Union Park, and it is a free event, free food, free drink, free carousel rides, free entertainment from four to seven, and the Corn Patch Clowns do the last half hour from six thirty to seven. So tell your kids and bring them along out there, and we're real excited. And because it's the tenth anniversary, oh, now it's on, I can hear now, it's National Clown Week also, starting the first week, and so we're going to be doing something every day in the community, so look for some clowns to wish you a happy National Clown Week. Thank you.
Now, tell us about your bouquets.
This is, I do make these bouquets, and I made this specially for you.
Oh, thank you.
And he, you're so welcome. This is your happy National Clown bouquet.
Okay, and I'm going to share with all my friends that are, we're going to have a great time. Trixie, thank you very much, and I'm going to put this right here. What a lovely bouquet around.
Thank you.
Now, how long does it take you to make a bouquet like this?
About forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes?
Yeah.
All right.
If I go really fast, I can do it in a half hour, but best if nothing goes wrong.
One can go along.
No, it can go wrong for balloons, yeah.
Exactly. All right, so, as a proclamation, Trixie, I'm going to read this, so it follows, "The Corn Patch Clown Alley, number 189, was officially started on June 23, 1989. And whereas members of Corn Patch Clowns in Des Moines perform a variety of public services to their community, and whereas Corn Patch Clowns have over sixty members that volunteer their time to perform and bring joy to the lives of many handicapped and ill children at schools, hospitals, and camps. And the Corn Patch Clowns also bring happiness to people throughout the city as they support charitable local organizations to better serve islanders in need. And whereas the Corn Patch Clowns participate in the international education events and local educational events accumulating many hours of clown education in order to better serve islanders, and whereas on August 5, Corn Patch Clowns will celebrate International Clown Week, they will also be celebrating their tenth anniversary of hosting Clowns at the Carousel, a free family event in Union Park from four o'clock to seven."
What could go wrong?
Well, we'll talk about that later. But see, there's people in blue eyes here.
They know that I've got some vegetables.
They do, all right. Would you keep an eye on me? I'm a little concerned about this. Which will also include free carousel rides, games, education, stage shows, food, and lots of clowning around.
That's right.
And now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim their first week of August 2012 as International Clown Week, and we hope that all of our citizens will share their appreciation of the community services dominated by these sixty islanders who bring laughter and joy to life. Let's give the Corn Patch Clowns a big... Oh, this will be a great. Okay, we want this out of the way.
Thank you so much.
And this is for you?
Oh, that's right.
All right, let's bring up the Des Moines Police Department representatives who are here, because we have a twenty-ninth annual National Night Out, and these ladies and gentlemen are representing our police department.
You're a neighborhood leader.
And neighborhood leader, we need neighborhood leaders up there as well. All right, everybody kind of, you've got to tighten up. Let's move this point out.
Joe?
All right, we're going to have Joe Gonzalez quickly give us an overview of what's going to take place, and then I'm going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. The National Organization of Town Watch coordinates this event. This has been going on nationally for twenty-nine years, this is the twenty-third year here in Des Moines. We're going to have thirty-four neighborhoods actually are having events, or thirty-four locations with forty-two neighborhoods and agencies that are going to be participating in, so this is kind of a busy night for us, where people in their neighborhoods kind of take back, their neighborhoods have come out and party and kind of basically do the things that they want to do to kind of get together and know everybody. We take turns going around the city, and I think there's always a competition, used to be a competition between, I think, the mayor and the chief to see how many neighborhoods they could cover, and now I think it's between the mayor and Johnson Moore to see how many neighborhoods that they can cover within that time.
Now, we're still one of the... And so we...
Johnson Moore and I will challenge the...
So we have a lot of events planned that's going to be coming out, so I encourage you to kind of look at, it'll be coming out as a press release, and probably also in City View, datebook, as far as all the different areas that are going to be having events. It's always really a fun time. We enjoy going out and covering it and getting together with all the neighborhood residents, and it's a special day to us, and so we encourage anybody out there that's getting a chance to do it to come on in.
Hours, hours, tell us about the hours.
Oh, the hours are usually like from five to eight P.M., and somewhere at five, some at five-thirty, some at six, six-thirty, and I think, what's the latest there? I think eight o'clock are the latest ones, and so we kind of start out with the early ones.
Nine, or something.
And so, well, you can see that from five to about nine, nine-thirty, we have to cover thirty-four, thirty-five locations, and so it's kind of a daunting task, but it's fun, and we'll get it done.
All right. As you can see, these are all the neighborhoods that are going to participate in, so we have an official proclamation for each and every one of them, but the proclamation reads as follows, "The National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the twenty-ninth annual National Night Out event on Tuesday, August 7, 2012. And whereas the Des Moines Police Department, neighborhood groups, businesses, and concerned citizens work together diligently throughout the year to prevent crime using sound community policing strategies. And whereas neighborhood awareness, spirit, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out project and are key components in fighting crime and crime prevention. And whereas the National Night Out provides an opportunity for Des Moines residents to join together with thousands of other communities across the United States in the same day in support of safer neighborhoods and to demonstrate the value of cooperative crime prevention efforts." Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council, do proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2012 as our twenty-ninth National Night Out, and call upon the residents of Des Moines to recognize and to participate in this special observance. And I also will say that, having gone to a number of these for the last ten years, I will say that it's a great night out, and it's only with the cooperation of the neighborhood and neighborhood leaders that we can hopefully reduce crime in and around Des Moines, and with our police department working with neighbors, working with businesses, we're going to continue to make Des Moines a better place to live, and to work, and to have a job, and grow and raise a family. So thank you all for all your efforts, and let's all work together to make this the best National Night Out ever. Let's give this, our people in blue a great big hand, as well as our representatives, neighborhood leaders. So... So we're going to have to hit thirty-four of them, is that right?
Yeah, he's going to be on the phone. Should I get family on the phone, Frank?
Yeah, he just asked me to talk to him.
Sorry, yeah, my pocket's...
What do you want me to do?
Some wine burger. Just pass Nob Hill Drive.
Hi.
One who called to order the municipal housing agency governing board meeting for July 23rd. We will quickly move into that as I ask the clerk to take roll.
County.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, item two is approving negotiations and conveyance of Community Housing Initiatives Inc., CHI, for the disposition, sales of 1061 21st Street and 1163 MLK Parkway and 1933 24th Street, Board Communication Number 12-387. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item, on this negotiation? Seeing none, could we have a motion from the board?
Moved.
Okay, it's been moved, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven yes.
Seven yes. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the following pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program. A is Joe Phallus of 3021 East 8th Street, Board Communication Number 12-386. B is Danny McCarroll of 2521 47th, Board Communication Number 12-384. And C is Francis and Louis Reeves of 104 East 36th Street, Board Communication Number 12-385. Is there anyone here to speak on either any of the items, three, A, B, or C?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Nobody's speaking. I just think that as I looked at that list of people that were now becoming property owners, it would be nice if the city would send them a letter, just to inform them as, you know, some of the services that the city has, maybe information about who they would contact regarding something, and more importantly, if they're looking at doing any addition to their property that would qualify for tax abatement, then that's their responsibility. I just think, you know, welcoming them as a property owner now, and these are city services and contact information would be helpful.
You thinking that should come from the municipal housing agency board, or from the city council, or from city manager, or who do you think?
I think it should come from the city council.
Okay.
The mayor and council.
All right.
So I would move those items.
With the attachment that we thank them and acknowledge their ownership.
Their homeownership and the, yeah.
All right.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Seven yes.
Item four is a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We said adjourned. We'll move right now into the pre-city council meeting. Prior to our city council meeting, we sometimes have a moment of silence or a message, and tonight, we're going to hear from our own city council member, Skip Moore, and we would ask that those who would participate with us, that we stand at this time.
This is from August 31. She speaks with wisdom and faithful instruction is on her tongue. She watches over the affairs of her household and does not eat the bread of vitality. Her children arise and call her blessed, her husband also, and he praises her. Many women do noble things, but you surpass them all. Charm is deceptive and beauty is fleeting, but a woman who fears the Lord is to be praised. Give her the reward she has earned, and let her words bring her praise at the city gate. Amen.
All right, item one, I'll ask clerk to take roll, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
I'll move.
All right, it's been moved, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda for those in the audience tonight, those are items three through thirty-one. These are routine items, and we discuss them as one vote unless either a city council member or a member of the audience, general public, asked to have one polled for either clarification or further discussion. Tonight, so those are items three through thirty-one again, and I will say that item four S, council member Moore wishes to speak. Item seven, council member Moore votes no. And item eight, council member Hensley wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anybody in the audience or city council members would like to have polled for further discussion? Again, three through thirty-one. Seeing none, balance has been moved. Hallie?
Aye.
Seven yes.
All right, that takes us directly to four S. Four is the licenses and permits and approving the alcoholic beverage license applications. Four S in this particular case is Lyer's Club at 216 Court Avenue, they are applying for a C liquor license. Mr. Moore?
Mayor, later on in the consent, we're setting a date of hearing for the Lyer's Club on 23D due to sale to underage persons. I would like to continue this until after their hearing. I realize they'll just pay their fine, but I think it'd be inappropriate to renew their license at this date until after their hearing has been discussed.
Should your motion is to continue?
To continue.
What becomes the status of, because the hearing isn't on today's agenda, we're setting the date of it?
I believe...
How do the dates match up?
Well, I'm not sure, but they're, I think they're allowed to continue with current liquor license until such time.
Okay. Okay, then move. Hallie?
Aye.
All right, takes us to seven, no, eight. Item eight is a land property transaction. Eight is authorized voluntary acquisition and approval and accept real estate documents for 121 Lincoln Place Drive from Thomas J. and Michelle M. Hollister for the Lincoln Place Stormwater Improvement Project, Council Communication Number 12-396. Mrs. Hensley?
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought to my attention, it's been a couple of years ago, so I'm real pleased to see that Public Works is moving forward with this, because I think it is the right decision. However, once we have a parcel of property like this, hopefully the neighboring properties on each side will step forward and be willing to make arrangements to acquire that through the city and/or at least take care of it, because otherwise we have a nuisance lot, potentially a nuisance lot, by going about doing this. So I would just ask that the staff work extremely hard to figure out a way that would encourage the property owners to do that, so that it doesn't become a nuisance for us down the road. So I would move item number eight. And then, I guess, Bill, if you could just send an email with the date as to the demolition and when we expect to have that happen?
Prior to vote, Ms. Hensley, I'd like to add that it is some, of some concern to me, this property was sold apparently in 1975, or...
Built.
Well, built, but I would assume that somebody, that was a lot that the city must have sold, that sat over a storm sewer.
Correct.
And so I'm hoping that, I'm trying to figure out at the end of the day, how we make sure that when these kinds of properties are sold, that we get proper notice to everybody as to what it is that's going on with that piece of property, and that either they or we with that notice take care of the problem, so we don't see this almost thirty years later come, or more actually, appear in front of us and try to have to fix it for a fairly sizable number.
Mayor, County, members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works, and Mayor, County, I certainly appreciate the underlying concern here. We now have a far more sophisticated process that works through the permanent development center for review of site plans, including underground utilities, some of which may be publicly and some privately owned with easements. So the type of situation here that really... So the type of situation here that really leads in part to our request to you to purchase this property hopefully has been solved by a far more sophisticated process we have in 2012 than we had in, as you stated, in 1975. And I did want to, since I am already up here, Mrs. Hensley, also go back to your point, we will be reaching out to the neighbors to find out if they have an interest in purchasing it. Obviously, we would want to ensure that that purchase does not allow similar improvements so we're not in the same issue in the future, but we'll be happy to do that. But Mayor, the very, the root cause here, in my view, is far less likely to happen with the review process we have today, really led by our community development staff, but also involving our engineering and public works staff and other areas to ensure that we don't duplicate this kind of issue where essentially we permitted construction that later creates a great hazard and inconvenience for our residents.
Right, and thank you very much. And not for you to address, but Mr. Manager, hopefully as we look through process, there's a number of things that happened 25, 30 years ago that occasionally appears in front of us that we need to have a process that sort of reviews it so that neighborhoods and neighbors and everyone understands what consequences are of development, and I'm sure we're going to discuss some of that a little later on, but hopefully we're going to refer to you for that work. It's been moved.
Aye.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda and takes us to ordinance's first consideration. Item 32 is amending Chapter 102 of the municipal code regarding eligibility for issuance of licenses for use of right-of-way and license amendments, Council Communication Number 12-400A, communication from the Midwest Fiber Network Systems requesting to waive readings and have final approval of this ordinance. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to item 32, amending Chapter 102?
Question for the manager, is there any reason why we would not want to waive the second and third readings?
Mrs. Hensley, councilmembers, from a staff perspective, no, there's not. We would be supportive of the waiver, but it is an issue that you discussed this morning at your workshop. It is a significant undertaking and an important change, and I think we just want to make sure that you feel comfortable going forward. From a staff perspective, we have no objection.
And it's my understanding from the letter we received from Midwest Fiber earlier this afternoon that they also want...
Yes.
...to have the ability to do.
To.
Okay. So I'll move item 32, 32A.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, if I could just inject one.
Yes.
There are fees associated with this process that as you approve this ordinance tonight, we will begin to work on that. It's a fairly long-term process to evaluate that, the fees that are associated with this, so we will be coming back to you in the future with it. But it's an important piece and one that will help recoup our expenses in this endeavor in the future.
And these companies that are, Wellmark is another one, and this Midwest Fiber, will the fees be retroactive?
Those, the fees will be effective on an annual basis going forward, so yeah, we'll capture them.
Okay.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Seven yes.
Item 33, which is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding citywide snow removal and establishing odd-even side snow parking zones, Council Communication Number 12-390. We had a nice presentation on a lot of this this morning at our workshop, and Mr. Stowe, turn it to you.
Mayor, County, members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. I certainly will not repeat all of the elements you heard this morning that were presented by the Public Works staff, Mr. Kuzitsa, Ms. Tease, and Mr. Braun did a great job. I did have an opportunity to look at it on YouTube, my thanks to the city clerk staff and Amelia Hamilton-Morris and our communication staff here at the city. As you all know, the council agendas and meetings are up very quickly for the public to see. This morning, a workshop was held, among other things, on this issue, and that remains available both in terms of the YouTube video and the slides that were used available for the public. So without being terribly redundant, there are a few points that I wanted to touch on for the benefit of the audience here in particular, and those who are viewing us who haven't had an opportunity to review the agenda materials this morning. First of all, just a couple of observations. When I started doing this kind of work for the city of Des Moines about 15 years ago now, as is often our MO in Public Works, we will meet at the beginning of a season like the snow season, will all of our plow drivers, and I remember that very first season being left with the impression that if there was one issue that our staff could agree on, and I'm sure Mr. Moore, as somebody who was part of that meeting now 15 years ago, can remember the repetition throughout his career, the one issue that our plow drivers continually look to as an area that needs improvement is improving their service delivery by removing cars from residential streets. Parking on residential streets during our plowing operations is unanimously pointed to by our drivers is a huge impediment to us doing our job very effectively. And in my business, it is very unusual that we come up with sea change kinds of issues to put at your feet for approval and for review. This is certainly one of them. The last one that I can remember, and probably the only one similarly revolutionary in my history was the automation of solid waste and recyclable collection and yard debris collection. And that is going from a two or three-person crew, all manually throwing trash and recyclables and yard debris into the back of packers, to now the very highly effective, highly efficient, but at the time, very controversial process of using an automated mechanical arm to pick up the toter, the container, and empty it. Very efficient, but frankly created a significant amount of controversy at the time and a significant amount of inconvenience for a short period of time, at least to our residents. But one of those issues that, in retrospect, now we look back some 10 years ago and have very, very few concerns about that change as to the net result, the impacts, the efficiencies that led to the operation. I would suggest to you, as I think was suggested by Pat and Sarah and Bruce this morning, the kind of change that we're suggesting now in terms of prohibiting parking on residential streets during snow and ice control until we plowed it is very similar. It will provide huge benefits to the city, I believe, benefits in terms of the efficiency of plowing, but also removing snow and ice from street services that are fueling the whole process of pothole creation by the freeze-thaw cycle. But there will be inconvenience in some neighborhoods more than others. We began this process, as Mrs. Hensley I'm sure remembers, because we started really in her ward with some pilot programs now four or five seasons ago, and have reached a point where we have 21 of some 57 recognized neighborhoods in Des Moines that are under a prohibition like now we are suggesting for the remainder of the city. Let me just touch on a few of the pieces of this puzzle and try to answer any questions you may have, and certainly I'll try to be responsive to those in the audience that will have questions and concerns. I certainly can't overstate that there is an unanimous agreement that this is the best thing possible. I believe that there is certainly agreement among those of us who do it for a living that it is the right direction and it will create long-term efficiencies for the city of Des Moines and for most of us. What unfortunately we've kind of lost as a city is the idea of what streets are intended to be. Streets are not intended to be parking lots. Streets are intended to be a thoroughfare, a conveyance, a way for people to move. Our city ordinance now prohibits parking for more than 24 hours on the street with vehicles. Unfortunately, in snow and ice control situations, we have people that really abuse this, in particular to the detriment of all the rest of us. A few bullet points I'll go through, and again, I'll be happy to answer questions either as I go through or at the end, and I'll certainly be available after a public comment. There will be improved efficiency by using the wing plow, you see at the bottom. That has an additional, essentially, an additional four feet of plow space available. It provides greater cleaning. One thing that isn't very visible in this picture, but underneath the truck itself, there's something called a belly plow that provides downward pressure. All of this is intended to require less movements of this machinery to clear the snow, that is to try and actually get down to the pavement. Between all of those devices which are used in major cities in the United States and the snow belt at least, we believe that we have a far greater service delivery opportunity than we've had before. And as part of that process, because we'll be using less equipment, passes in particular, less materials and less fuel, we believe that we can improve service efficiency right now. We plow residential neighborhoods at four inches of snow. We intend to do it because of this greater efficiency and still save money in a typical year at two inches of snow. And as some of the materials in your blue letter indicate, both asphalt folks and concrete professionals look at the process now that leaves residual snow on pavements and recognize, in their professional opinion and professional expertise, that that's creating potholes on our street services. If we have a better opportunity to remove it earlier on with this equipment, we'll have fewer potholes. And certainly, the driving surface itself will be safer for all of us as motorists. And again, we believe that it has the opportunity to reduce costs. I know this was covered this morning, but I feel it's important to come back. This is a page taken out of Citizen Satisfaction Survey from the Public Works area in particular that points to two areas that are interrelated here that our residents have said consistently they're dissatisfied with our service. Snow removal in your neighborhoods and conditions of streets in their neighborhoods. And those, again, are interrelated because residual snow creates potholes and the freeze-thaw cycle. So these are areas that our staff has focused in on now for four or five years and trying to develop a better way to get our hands around operations. Here's, if nothing else, a great photograph taken on the same day, different areas of the city. The one on the right, obviously, one of the 21 neighborhoods now that currently have restricted residential parking during snow events until plowed. The one on the left, very clearly demonstrating residual snow and ice because cars like that can stay on the street, will plow around them. Obviously, very ineffective in how we can deal with wing plows in that kind of situation. What typically happens when that dark car in the foreground moves, the neighbors will call and say, "Come back and replow it." That's not only an expense, but as we replow it, we're putting that residual snow back in somebody's driveway approach, and clearly an inconvenience to them, and ultimately a call back to us in more situations than not. So we'll have fewer driveway fill-ins, reduce snow buildup again, and then again, we're starving the freeze-thaw cycle. If you can remove moisture from the surface of a street, the absolute critical ingredient of moisture that, as it melts, gets down into the pavement and expands when it freezes, is starved out of the process. Far less maintenance in the long term on our street system as we get to better snow and ice control. I know a critical area that I've heard from each and every one of you is how we're going to get word out about this, so we try to reduce the number of folks who are cited by this. We certainly will coordinate with local media, use Channel 7 to get the word out as we get closer to the snow season about this change. There are a number of other technological tools that we'll have out there on our website. We have a listserv that one can sign up to be notified when we are kicking into these varying areas of our snow and ice control. We do arterial streets first and do it continually until the snow ends, and then we have an opportunity to clear those up before we go to residential streets. At that point, then, in the residential subscription lists, we would notify people, "Get your cars off the street," because we will be plowing in residential areas and avoid the ticket. And of course, through Ms. Tease's expertise, among others, we're continuing to use social media, both Facebook and Twitter for notification. Some key points, again, we think that by using this more efficient technology, by getting out there earlier, and by plowing at two inches rather than four inches in residential neighborhoods, it's obviously an improvement in snow removal. We will have out on both the webpage and listserv notices, parking restrictions and notices. We believe that the program itself will be greatly improved by this and reduce the likelihood of long-term maintenance because of freeze-thaw. We do recognize the importance of an extensive educational program. I'm really pleased in our workings with Chief Bradshaw and her staff, our agreement to, for the first two storms of this year, warn rather than cite to try and educate people who have violated the ordinance, should you choose to pass it. But would certainly want to emphasize that the snow route system that we've had for some 30 years will remain the same, and if people park on snow routes, they're going to be ticketed. I found it interesting in our review of the history of this, I hold in my hand a 1984 document, which really is the driving force beyond, behind how we do snow and ice control now. Essentially, this is the first material change we've made, other than the kind of echoes up to this than we've done with five and 16 neighborhoods, but we have done very little to change how we handle snow and ice control, at least as it's obvious to the public in almost 30 years. Very pleased at the work that our staff has done here in coordination with a number of neighborhood leaders and neighborhood groups. I'm confident that it'll be a long-term improvement for the city, but I'm also equally confident that there will be short-term repercussions to you as council people. There certainly are folks who have asked and will continually ask, "Where do we park?" We've got more cars than we have spaces, if you will, to park off the street. And I'm afraid I cannot give you a one-size-all-fits-answer to that, but I would remind you of the overall principle that at least I start from, that streets are not intended to be parking lots, they're intended to be conveyances. They're an opportunity, a thoroughfare for traffic to move, not for traffic to stop. That's particularly the case in snow and ice emergencies. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, or, Mr. Mayor, you may want to take a public comment first, whatever works for you.
I have some full information by now. I'm not sure I can possibly, any question to ask? Anybody have anything down here?
I have.
I have.
Go ahead, Ms. Hensley.
Question on the signage, placement of signs, will that follow what we've done in the pilot projects throughout the city?
It will not, Mrs. Hensley. As you know, there's been some feedback about too much signage. Signs are great when we needed to educate someone about a particular traffic enforcement issue or a danger. If they're in your front yard or in the right-of-way in front of your yard, whatever it may be, it's very inconvenient, people don't like it, and that's certainly one of the teachings that we got out of the 21 neighborhoods that we've been involved in. We will heavily sign, however, the five neighborhoods that are odd-even. You heard discussion about that today, and I can certainly go through that, but there are five neighborhoods that are so densely populated without reasonable opportunities for off-street parking that they will have to be signed to educate people on the idea on even-numbered days, like the 22nd. You park on the side that's evenly addressed, then next day you have to move to the odd side. That is going to be a little unusual by Des Moines context, but certainly not by other major cities in the snow belt, but those kind of things we'll specially sign. The city generally will not be signed on the idea of no residential parking during snow events.
So will you go back and remove some of the signs in Waterbury and other neighborhoods?
Great question. I'm confident that after we have a sense that people really know what's going on, that we will be able to remove some of the signs that we put out before, because I do know, in decibels, that there are certainly problems with too many signs in some of the neighborhoods that you represent.
Brian, and then Skip.
Thanks, Mayor. You had mentioned, Bill, and I think Pat alluded to it this morning, a little bit about other cities in the snow belt. Can you give examples, maybe for the audience, of other cities that have some similar ordinances to what we're trying to do, and maybe other cities that use these types of plows in the snow belt?
I certainly can, Brian, and there's, you know, certainly differences among cities and how they handle it. Chicago has a very complex kind of permitting process. On a day like today, you have to have a neighborhood permit to be able to park in a particular neighborhood, like the Wrigley area is an example. So I won't go into that one. That one is pretty complicated during good weather, let alone bad weather, but cities like St. Paul and Madison and Lincoln, similarly sized communities, will often have odd-even plus prohibitions in parkings in certain neighborhoods and certainly in arterial streets. So I don't want to communicate to you or to anyone that there is a community that is exactly like ours, because there are nuances, particularly when you get into very large cities like Chicago, about how they manage something like this, or New York, even more complicated than Chicago. But many of the Midwestern cities that you and I think has been comparable to us, again, Madison, Lincoln, St. Paul, have systems that are fairly similar to ours. They probably have more of the odd-even parking that in our estimation and our discussion with neighborhood leaders may be very confusing. And allowing that to creep out of the five neighborhoods that we've suggested probably would create more problems for law enforcement and for Public Works.
Skip?
One point I haven't heard made yet, and I know you...
And allowing that to creep out of the five neighborhoods that we've suggested probably would create more problems for law enforcement and for Public Works.
Skip?
One point I haven't heard made yet, and I know you probably don't like talking about it, but when there's on-street parking during snow removal, eventually, we do impact those cars with snow plows. And this is usually at great cost to the city, whereas if we don't have on-street parking, that should go away. Another issue that Sarah touched on this morning was the replows. And I don't think we can stress that enough, that usually, when we replow where a car's been parked, we're going to fill in the driveways, and it's usually not the driveway of whoever was parked there. And the snow has been driven over, it virtually turns to ice, it's extremely heavy. In some cases, snow blowers have a hard time moving it. But with our large elderly population and we have quite a few people that are physically challenged, and these people are paying somebody to open their driveways, well, then we get a call from them, it's, "Well, the guy's already been here because you plowed once. I can't get out or get in. Now what do I do?" And, you know, opening a driveway is usually 20 to 40 bucks. So I think that most of our residents realize, wait until we plow the street, then open your driveway, and that works very well. And I think that by eliminating on-street parking, it's really going to help with those two situations.
And thanks, Mr. Moore. Obviously, somebody who knows this work well, but just to give the audience a kind of picture of what we're talking about, the two points that Skip made, that wing plow, if you can imagine going down a street and literally running into a parked car, essentially what happens is very difficult, the plow has to stop, the hydraulic unit on the passenger side moves the wing plow upward, but it is very difficult, visibility can be very difficult, maneuverability can be very difficult. As you suggested, Skip, we have done damage, unfortunately, to a number of cars every year. I'm sure Mrs. Hensley remembers some of them in the Waterbury neighborhood that we have bought over time because of our inability to work very effectively with a piece of machinery this large. And your other point, Skip, about who we really inconvenience when we come back and replow, take the dark car, if you will, the traffic or the plow will be moving towards us as the audience. When it makes it past that dark car, it'll drop the blade and push it into their neighbor's driveway approach, not the owner of that car in almost every circumstance. So it's a really a nasty situation for neighborhoods to step into. And certainly, as any of us who've tried to deal with that now, ice-laden snow, often frozen in a drive approach, it's extremely difficult to get out, and it's all because someone did not park off the street.
All right, anything else? Somebody in the audience have any comments or thoughts?
Wendy Lucina, 4155 53rd Street in Des Moines. I'm more in favor of doing it this way than making it city, basically making it citywide versus doing it by neighborhood. I had serious concerns. I'm not 100 percent. Bill knows that, we've had that discussion. A few things I just want, mainly factually, just to make sure that you have the information when you vote. The citizen survey that Bill quoted there in 2007, prior to the existence of the test program, the satisfaction results to the direct question of how do you feel about plowing in the neighborhoods, on the neighborhood streets, was 57 percent. In 2011, that same survey, the results came back at 54 percent, which is 3 percent lower. While it's not dramatic, it certainly doesn't indicate necessarily that there's large citizen support. I do have some concerns on the citizen committee, which I've also discussed. Part of the reason that I wanted to be on the NRB was I want to get more people engaged and more people involved. And I would like to have seen, and moving forward, if there's going to be any changes, I'd like to see a little more attempt to put out a press release, maybe, that this committee's going to exist and get people like me the opportunity to call you and say, "Can I be involved?" I think it's good community outreach. I have some concerns with the premier service for the five neighborhoods with no up fee, but I still think it's better. I still think it's better. I don't want property values in any neighborhood association desecrated, let alone the city as a whole. So I do think it's better. Couple of questions for Bill. The email communication, can I address them directly to Bill or would you?
We'd appreciate if you've got some questions for us, because we're going to be voting on it. If you've got some communications with Bill, if you'd just communicate with him offline directly, that'd be great.
Okay, then we can do that later. One other concern I have is faster service. Public Works was forced to cut 10 street maintenance positions in the spring because of the budget cuts. I think some type of consideration needs to be given to the fact that it's going to be tougher to maintain, you know, a two- or three-day plow service for you, and that's more, is a boost for you. We need a few of those positions back if we can. My other concern in regard to other city, city of Des Moines primarily, about 60 percent of the residential's are 50-foot frontages. And when I spoke with Johnston, Urbandale, West Des Moines, while they didn't give me exact numbers, they said it would be relatively accurate to say less than 20 percent of their residential's are 50-foot frontages. When you have a 50-foot frontage, you're going to have more homes in less space. That being the case, while I agree with Bill, streets are not intended to be parking lots. The city of Des Moines was built under the idea that some street parking would be allowed, and I think some people do move to Des Moines for that reason, whether they be parents with teenage drivers, extra cars. My concern with that we might be chasing some of those families, younger families, out of the city, just something to keep in mind. One thing I would like to ask, and again, this is more from a community engagement thing, is in the spring, if we can do a town hall forum just to get feedback from the citizens, not just with the neighborhood leaders, something that's a press release put out that the entire community is invited to participate in, not saying that the program is going to be changed, but at least to look at how it is affecting specific people, neighborhoods, and that. Bill, I asked you a year and a half ago, when I first got involved with this, to send numbers for exactly how many allocable hours you spent prior to 2007, prior to the pilot program happening, and relate that to the number of inches of snow. And then I asked you to do it again for the most recent. I was sent a chart that does show that there is some type of a downturn. I asked Sarah to send me the specific numbers. I haven't had a chance to look at those, I got those today. But I'm confident that we're going to see some type of downturn, but I would like to see it continue, and I'd like to see specific numbers moving forward, too, if that's okay. And that's all I have. So I'm more in favor than against, since it's citywide. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, County, members of the council. My name is Mel Penns. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue, president of the Somerset Neighborhood Association. I want to first state that the work that the Public Works Department does in this city is always designed to be efficient, more effective, and never giving up having good service to our residents. As Mr. Stowe said, they look closely at the residential recycling process. You know, there were some growing pains with that, but it was the premier thing, and now the rest of the metros adopted it. I see this issue with the parking on city streets, similar in a way that we're trying to be more effective, serve our residents better, but we're actually just catching up. Most of the metro suburbs and contiguous cities to Des Moines already ban this. We do have some neighborhoods that are certainly a little different than some of our suburbs, but for the most part, and what I've seen in my neighborhood, this works. My neighborhood participated in the pilot program for two years. We went through the winter of, I don't know what you want to call it, in '09, '10, where we had all the snow and the ice. And when the city only came out at four inches, we had close to nine inches of snowpack ice and snowmelt on our streets. I had to go out and dig out the storm drains so that when the ice tried to melt, we could get rid of that. We had ruts on our streets, we had some cars that were quote "snowed in." Those that did move, we'd call and ask the city to come back out and plow it. I hated doing that, but I knew if I did call, they would come out, because that's the kind of service they provided. But I knew there needed to be a better answer when my wife got stuck on a flat street where I was standing in an inch of water on top of two inches of ice on top of three inches of snow. There needed to be a better way to do this. And this pilot program in the last two years in my neighborhood proved it can be done. We're all residential streets in my neighborhood. The city gave us plenty of ways to help notify folks in the pilot program. They've had little flyers. We sent volunteers around. We divided up the streets on a Monday night at 11:00 PM in early November, when most people are going to be home in bed. Whoever was out on the street got a little courtesy notice that, "Hey, snow's coming up, you know, we're in the priority program, get your car off the street." The first time we had a major snow and the wing plows came through, it was a revelation. I mean, the street, you could actually see the concrete underneath, you know, on the street's surface. I think we had two cars in the entire neighborhood that were left there. They learned their lesson pretty quick. We really got into compliance in my neighborhood, we enjoyed the program. I don't want to go back to the way we were. If 53 or even 50 percent was the approval rating that Public Works was getting on snow removal, even in public school or college on pass/fail, that's a failing grade. I think we could do a lot better than that, and I think that's what Public Works is trying to do here. There will be some inconvenience to some folks if it's an entire neighborhood area. I think staff and the proposal with the committee is to help work on that. But if somebody doesn't have a drive, get to know your neighbor. Give them a plate of cookies, say, "Can I put my car in your driveway until the city comes by? Let's all work together on this." I think it works great. And I think once it, hopefully, if it is implemented, if you choose to do that, I think people will come around real quick. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Mel, thanks. Pat?
If I park on the street, will he put cookies in my car?
Harold Allison, 4143 Mam Hill. I'm here with Des Moines neighbors tonight. We represented this idea early this spring, and the benefits to the entire city outweigh the inconvenience. I've been on the committee, the citizen committee, since November, December. City's been, Public Works has been very responsive to any objections, any questions, anything that we want to see changed, clarified, or fixed. That has not changed my opinion or Des Moines neighbors' opinion of the value of this program.
Thank you. All right, now seeing anyone else, let's go ahead and further discussion with council or a motion.
I'd like to move.
Item's been moved, discussion. Mr. Grease?
Aye.
Seven, yes.
All right, since it's 5:16, 17, we're going to move straight to hearings at this moment, beginning with item 35, the items regarding sidewalk cafe leases. A is the standard at 208 Third Street, Council Communication Number 12-402. One is a resolution denying the renewal of the sidewalk cafe lease, or two is an alternate resolution approving the renewal of the lease. Mr. Manjore, did you want to make a quick comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I know there are some concerns about the way these particular operations impact Third Street, particularly in very active periods. And whenever you're ready, I'd like to have Police Chief Bradshaw talk a little bit about some of the public safety issues that she sees, or perhaps Major Waymire's going to handle it.
Mayor, County, members of the council, I'm going to speak on behalf of Chief Bradshaw regarding some of the objections that we have for this request. I have a picture, I have a picture of the area we're talking about, and then I have a video that I'm going to play in the background as I talk. We still have Bill's. I have to get rid of Bill's.
All right. Sidewalk cafes and wing plows have a problem.
I have two pictures I want to show you. These were taken this morning. This is the area in front of the Komodo Club in the 200 block of Third Street, looking south, and you can see the sidewalk cafe that's in front of the standard. And the second picture I have is actually a close-up of the standard. I just want to get everybody an idea of how narrow the sidewalk becomes. That's fine in the middle of the day, but at night, when there's several thousand people walking up and down that street, it becomes somewhat cumbersome. Also, there's no parking there in the evening, so that area is street. It's not, it's not cut-out parking. And over the weekend, we had some video taken, just to give you an idea of that area. I have to get to it. I'm just going to let this video play, just to give you an idea of the pedestrian traffic that's in the area. We're not against sidewalk cafes, but for this area, it doesn't make sense. As you can see, it's a little dark in some spots. People are being forced to walk in the streets. We've done, we've had a great summer downtown. We have a squad of officers that we partner to provide with Operation Downtown and the Court Avenue Business Association. Squad of officers is on foot, and all they do in the evening is walk around to make sure that people are moving on the sidewalks, so that they're not blocking the way. We know that that leads to intimidation, assaults, people walking in the streets to get around them can get hit by cars. As you can see, that's the major problem here. Our only concern in this area is public safety. The existing fencing at the standard, it does create a congested area, as you can see there from the video. We didn't know this would be the case when that was put up, but we've lived it now, and that's what we're experiencing. Causes the pedestrians to routinely walk in Third Street. Third Street, at this time of night, is one of the busiest streets in the city. There's traffic headed to the south side all night long. Again, our objective here is not to stop sidewalk cafes, it's just to say that this area is too narrow. There's a part of the video that's coming up that you'll see, someone's coming out of the bar and trips and comes into the street. There's just not a lot of area here for less sidewalk. Right there, you see somebody come out of the bar and winds up in the street. It's kind of hard to tell, but we're lucky that that person or the people, the bystanders here, their own sidewalks weren't run over.
I think there's a fight.
There is, there's a fight.
That doesn't happen down there, does it?
I thank you for your time. I just wanted to show you the video as you consider this. There is no other objection from us other than that the sidewalks are narrow, and we believe that it creates a public safety issue.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak on the next item also, but I'd like to speak for these gentlemen on this item.
Do we have your name and address?
Larry Smithson, 1595 Copper Creek, Pleasant Hill, Iowa. I've been downtown for over 20 years. I've been involved with Court Avenue when it's been thriving. I've been involved with Court Avenue when it's dead. Anytime you have a busy place, you're going to have a few problems. You're going to have traffic, you're going to have a fight here and there, you have them at the arena, you have them anyplace where things go on. I think we've got several things to look at here that's very important. We can either, what really needs to be done is there needs to be a council put together or a committee that we can work these things. I'm not here to throw rocks at nobody or say that somebody's not doing a lot of thinking, but I heard the officer say something about during the daytime is fine, but it doesn't fit at the nighttime. The parking benches is kind of the same thing. If you don't want loitering, you don't put parking benches all over Court Avenue for people to sit on and to loiter. We do have a little bit of a problem downtown, this loitering. It's really no specific business being a problem or a nuisance. And I really think we are going the wrong way if we start taking away patios. We have worked hard on downtown. The business owners, maybe they only had enough money to be a paintbrush and paint. Maybe it was some new brick. These owners have taken Court Avenue a long ways from the days that we had pigeons above on the second and third floor in the Spaghetti Works building, okay? There's equally all kinds of businesses downtown that have and have been granted patios. I think it's very unfair I think it's very unfair, it's a big hardship, if you take two businesses and say, no, you can't, especially after one has already been granted. If there's something you want us to do, if there's something we need to help with, I know Komodo Club, and that will come next, but I know we employ off-duty policemen. We try to pay our share. You know, so much of this could be done with some thinking on the city, instead of ruining it and just saying no. You know, I go to other cities where they've had all these same problems. Kansas City, huge, their power light district. Las Vegas, Nevada, tons of problems for four blocks up and down Fremont Street. What did they do? They got with the city, and they closed the street down. We're small scale, these places. There's no reason that Court Avenue could not be partially blocked off or completely blocked off from Friday afternoon until Sunday, and we would alleviate most of these problems. You're right, we don't want nobody getting run over in the street. We don't want fights, and we're here to be on the policeman's side. We're with them. We all have the same interest. We don't want bad guys, we want fun people that want to spend money and make our city great. And, you know, taking this a step further, if we could get this blocked off on Court Avenue, and we could lease it to, let's say, the Court Avenue Association, then the policemen have more rights, rather than it being public sidewalk, to move people along. And the same thing with having a patio. If we have a patio, and we employ police officers, off-duty police officers, or the ODT that's already downtown, they can say, hey, no loitering in front of the sidewalk. Now, we have a smoking ordinance that got changed, that was not your fault, and it wasn't our fault. We have dealt with these people needing to get out to smoke, and it creates a problem. If with the small patios, we have an area that they can smoke, we know our customers, who's not our customers, and it gives us a little bit of right, not getting in trouble, just like the city wasn't, doesn't want to get in trouble, to say, move on. No, you're not the customers, you don't belong here. You can't hang in front of here. And I would like to take this one thing, one thing further. I see the video, and I wish the officer would please, or somebody bring it back up for me, of the Third Street. What really bothers me, as I look down Third Street, my vision, and I'm getting old, I see all the way down Third Street. I didn't hear one person say a problem about Johnny's Hall of Fame. I'm not here to knock Johnny's. Again, good businessperson, good place, I want him there. But if some of the problems, some of the major problems, have come from this corner and this business as well as anyplace else, and their patio clearly intrudes east 48 inches, the same amount of space that we're asking for, nobody's, nobody's got a problem with Johnny's. I haven't heard anybody say anything. I don't see Johnny's here being denied. You know, hey Johnny's, we've got to pull this back. You show me a busier corner than Third Street and Court Avenue, and we don't need to deal with that issue, something's out of hand here. I'm just going to ask, please, you have seen a lot of time, and I'll make this quick, you've seen a lot on Court Avenue. We've seen Des Moines up and down. I don't think we'll go in the right direction to take away the nice outdoor venues, and the people need a place to smoke, and we need a way to help make it as safe as we can. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Smithson, a couple of questions. Are you involved with the Court Avenue Business Association?
You know, I have had several things come up, and some really on time this summer, different funerals and different things, that I haven't been there much. Yes, I am, but I have not been for at least five months to meetings.
But I mean, if you look back at the last five years, have you been dues-paying, attending, have you attended the meetings?
For about the last year, yes, and then, like I said, about the last five months, I have not been there.
But up until the last year, no?
No.
Okay. And have you always hired off-duty police officers?
Well, I can't say always, because as we know, for a while it was legal.
No, I mean, I mean, once the city be allowed it again, have you always hired off-duty police officers in your establishments?
Always.
Always?
Always.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Dante Heck, 1317 McKinley Avenue, the owner and general manager of the standard. I have some letters here. I emailed each and every one of you, if you wanted a hard copy.
Thank you.
Humble to receive and file.
There's some pictures on that.
In move, go on, press Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There might be one short. First off, we've contacted Philip Portman and Bob Knudsen, there's no problem with the zoning. What actually we see happening is having our patio there corrals people in and makes way for other people to walk by. If you notice in that video, where the congestion is, is where there's no patio. That's where nobody's forced up against the wall, they're out there smoking, and they kind of spread out, and it gets unorganized and dangerous. So, I don't think taking the patio away is necessarily the answer. The congestion only occurs the last couple hours of the, of a weekend night. That's six hours out of 105 work week. Like Larry said, we're here to work with the police, and we're here to work with whoever need be. We rely on our patio to compete with other businesses. It serves as additional seating, also gives us outdoor appeal. What we, what measures we've taken since this has become an issue, is we've taken on extra security to make sure that the pathway is clean, and nobody's just sitting there loitering in front of our patio.
Rob Iavina, I'm one of the owners of the standard. Originally from Kansas City, I've been working out here at the embassy across the street doing a renovation. Probably brought $2.5 million worth of business to Des Moines myself, and I brag about this city and all of, all of the things that you guys do. The city's been great to work with. This is the only incident that I've had that is somewhat uncomfortable. Everything's been really, really good as far as permitting and all the other things that go on in the city. I will say that, that removing this patio is, is, in my opinion, not the right thing to do, and it's not going to answer the, the need that the police have. Clearly in the video, you could see that it created the pathway, whereas if you don't have it, you have a monster amount of people out in front of the building, and no one can pass through. Then you have more potential for there to be people going out into this, into the streets. As well as the fact that recently, the city has taken away the two parking spots in front of our, our facility, which used to keep that area even more corralled and even more a pathway. Now that it's been removed, it does give more potential to go back out into the street. No matter whether there's people there or not, you still have the potential to go out into the street. I'm not really sure the reason why this, the parking was taken away, but one of the things that we did inside of our email that went out to you guys was, we also mentioned the fact that that was also something that's come up recently, that's, that's kind of forced this issue.
All right, any questions? Thank you.
Just want to go over a couple of the pictures, if you guys want to kind of correspond. The last couple pages, that's a picture of our extra security.
Where's that at now, in the last couple pages?
Yeah, the last, maybe the very last page.
Are they in uniform?
Yep, they are.
Our uniform is typically a black slacks and black t-shirt.
With the standard written on both sides.
So it's not police officers, it's individuals that you hire, like bodyguards?
Yes. Correct.
Dante, when were these pictures taken?
I've taken all these pictures in the past two weeks on the weekends. So, this recent weekend and the one.
So how do you account for the video from Saturday night?
Um, you know, I.
Video from Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
I thought the video did a very good job at showing that, for the most part, our, our patio is clear, it's just where there's no patio, there's a congestion and loitering going on. I'd even go as far as to say, if we put a patio in front of Komodo Club, that would give, that would make the cops' job a lot easier, because they could take away all those loiterers, send them down the street, to a better, more of a place that would be suitable, and it would, it would keep customers from the Komodo Club out front. I think it would just make it a lot easier for the police. The video, I thought it was a very good video, stating our case as far as the patio goes. It was very clear in front of there.
We just had a small section on the left of the video, and it also moved to the right where Mickey's was, and there was a lot of people out in front of the street.
And what's your role with the standard?
I'm Brendan Kelly, I'm also one of the owners. Even without the sidewalk cafe, it's a problem with people in the street all over Third and Court downtown.
And like Larry said, it was, you know, congestion is everywhere downtown. Going, moving to some of our other pictures. There's Third and Court, Johnny's at the top. Also, there's Komodo Club at the top, and then the bottom, there's Mickey's. It thankfully gets busy everywhere downtown, Court Avenue on the weekends, and it's very good for the economy and for the city.
What time were these, at the night, were these pictures taken?
Approximately between 11 o'clock and 1:00 in the morning.
I think in the, in the letter also, that, that we drafted up, we're, we're not saying, give it to us forever, we're saying, you know, give us, give us six months, let us prove to you again, and we can review this again if you want to. Give us an opportunity to prove this, rather than just look at a snapshot of time in the last two weeks, give us a real test. You know, let us prove ourselves.
Can you go back and, and when did you first hear of the recommendation from police? Had there been conversations with you? Could you give me a little background on that?
We noticed, well, last month, I think it was, that some police officers were taking pictures out front of our building, so we went and asked them what was going on, and they, they said something about, they were trying to take the patio away. And it, the conversation wasn't too long, it was pretty short and sweet, and we got the gist of it. We've done some checking into it.
We also got a letter, obviously.
We also got a letter at the beginning of this month.
And so when did you purchase? When did you take over the standard?
In October of 2011.
March 2nd is when we actually renovated and opened.
So you took it over.
After Pelican.
Okay.
And they changed it.
Thank you.
It's really nice. I'm down.
Are the, are the gates, the, the fencing itself, are those removable? Can you pull those out of the concrete?
So you pull them out when you're not using it as a cafe area?
Sure, like during the winter, if they need to do snow removal, they're removable whenever the city needs to take them.
We did, do that.
Okay. But you leave them in during the day?
Yes. Yeah, and it's used pretty much from lunchtime, we have a crowd, up until closing, it is used. Even in the wintertime, when we do put it up after the snow removal, people use that patio in the wintertime.
Did notice that some of the patios that are around downtown on Third and Court aren't removable, but ours is, so we take it out whenever there's a problem or a street party or anything on Court Avenue. But they need the extra space on the patio, that's fine with us.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask the officer to come back up, just for a question?
Absolutely.
Could you, a couple of questions. Could you address other patios within Court Avenue and respond to the Johnny's Hall statement, and also, you know, how the decision was arrived at? I know there've been some other items that have been discussed in Court Avenue, and I know we're trying to have a balance here.
The patios on Court Avenue themselves, they, they're different in my mind, because there's cutout parking on Court Avenue. They're, they're not, the sidewalk doesn't butt up against the street. There is, there is angle in parking on the south side, and then it's like a cutout parking on the north side. So the patios themselves and the sidewalks aren't near the travel portion of the highway. They're, they're, they're separated from that. As far as Johnny's goes, I'm not aware that, that the patio comes out 48 inches. If, if, it would create a similar congestion point, however, the traffic headed south is less except for at the end of the night than it would, it would be on Third Avenue, or on Third Street, excuse me.
Other question?
I have, I have a question. I, I mentioned this last week to somebody down here at City Hall. Do you, do you see any middle ground where the needs of the police are accomplished if the fence was required to be removed by a certain time in the evening? The tables and the fencing gone?
It's, I don't know what time that would be. The, the issue is, is I believe they're using it as their smoking patio, and that's going to be something that, it's just, as you saw from the very first picture, there's only about two feet of actual sidewalk space. And when you have cars coming down Third Street, sometimes that's not enough. You can't see the cars in the video, because all the cars have gotten onto the other side of the street. I have a picture from last year, if you, if you'd like to see it, of just how many cars we're talking about, from about 11:30 on a Saturday night. It's, it's fairly drastic. I mean, it's, it isn't, it isn't something that, that we're not concerned about. Anytime there are pedestrians in the street at that time of night, you run the risk of, of running up against intoxicated drivers.
So what's the proposal? Where are they going to smoke? If that is, if that's being used as their smoking patio, how do you see that, if we don't approve this going forward, where are they going to go?
They'd have to go outside. There's that alley in between the Komodo Club and the standard that is currently being used by a lot of the people, but they're, they're off the sidewalk. This is just a picture of traffic on, and this is from, we put a pole camera up last year, just to get an idea of what kind of traffic we're talking about, and these pictures are just taken on a Friday or Saturday night.
And this is on Third going south?
That's, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's Third Street. I just wanted to give you an idea of the, of.
At midnight.
Of the number of cars that we're talking about. It's hard to see from the video, because we're shooting that from the garage, looking down over the top. Excuse me.
Captain, this picture here shows on-street parking. Has that been removed?
That's from last summer.
No longer?
Yeah, it has been.
It's, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, there's no parking on that area.
What would the effect be if we put the parking back there?
We had even a worse problem. People would loiter in between the cars, dart across the street. It creates even a, a more of a congestion, congested area, and we were having more fights. That's why the, no parking was put there.
Okay, thank you. I get, I, I would like to go ahead and try a motion, I'm not sure. I guess the comment was made by one of the owners here, that they'd like to do it on a, to give them a chance to prove it. I guess I'm just on the other side of the issue, and what I would do is make a motion to uphold the recommendation by police for the rest of this year, and evaluate it, and then give them the opportunity to come back in six months, and we could determine, you know, whether or not, what's, what's been the difference in the, the impact by doing that, going just the opposite of what you said, because we, I think, have a good understanding of what's going on right now, the way it's set up. And we, we're working very hard to find a balance to deal with the issues in Court Avenue. I know that it's been very successful. I, I know when this request came before the council, I really debated whether or not, I was not comfortable moving forward, because we had some issues. So there's been a period of time where we've tried it. I'd like to now have a period of time going forward, and would be open to looking at something, you know, the first of next year, so that we could compare them and look at it, and see if, if we can really determine that there has been an impact, a positive impact, or if we want to go back and revisit the patio. That would be my motion. So to uphold police for the rest of the year, give them the opportunity to come back and revisit the issue.
Question, has this been taken to the Court Avenue District Committee? Have they discussed this, and have they looked at it in detail?
I can't answer the question.
I can't, I can't answer that either, Councilman.
I, I would think this is, we should have taken it first, is to that committee, and let them look at it and see if there's anything they could come up with.
And I'd be comfortable with that, before that we come back and take final action.
We can do that.
But, you know, even the possibility of closing that one lane on the west side or something, that we, we need to keep activities down in our Court Avenue area, I think. That's where the young people like to gather, and that's something that they enjoy down there.
It's, it's very busy. It's as busy down there as it has been at any time in the last 20 years. We have a whole squad of officers down there now that are, we're basically splitting the cost on, and they're on foot, and they're walking around, meeting the business owners, talking to people, keeping the pedestrian traffic flowing. Kids especially are not congregating. This is something we proposed to Operation Downtown, or Downtown Community Alliance last year, and they were all for it. It's worked out great. We've had a great summer.
So this was actually proposed to the Downtown Community Alliance group?
To pay for off-duty officers.
Okay, so can you share with me how the off-duty officers are being paid for? Are all businesses sharing in that?
Not all, no. Downtown Community Alliance is picking up majority of the cost.
But other businesses that are actually coming forward and sharing?
Some of the, and my understanding is, and this would be a better question for Glenn Lyons, is that some of the Court Avenue Business Association has, is paying into that. However, they decreased the amount they were going to, they committed to pay early on. So Downtown Community Alliance is picking up the majority of the cost.
Okay.
All right. I skip one speak, and then we need to redefine the motion.
Motion, agree.
First of all, I think everybody needs to understand when the police department comes in front of the city council asking for help, it causes concern, and that's exactly what they're doing tonight is they're asking for help. Reality is, patios at bars and lounges and grills and restaurants have become extremely popular all through the metro area, probably across the country. I think the reality down there is, is the amount of space we have for them there, it's easier to go out to West Des Moines or Pleasant Hill and put in a bar with a huge patio. Much to its credit, Larry Smithson, regardless of anything else, Larry, you stuck through Court Avenue through thick and thin. You saw the good times, and you saw the bad times, and you stayed there. A lot of people down there have said you're the one, if it wasn't for you, there wouldn't be a Court Avenue district now. And I think your suggestion of people getting together and talking about this holds a lot of merit. And I would like to point out that Captain Waymeyer's video from Saturday night, I did see people walking in the street by your bar. That causes me concern. I think that's what's causing them concern. So if the motion is revised, I'd like to see this continued for the partners downtown to talk about this and try and come back with a resolve.
My motion, what I would do then is, we'll continue the hearing on it. We'll go back and talk with the Court Avenue Business Association and ask that the DCA be involved and have it come back at the next council meeting, the first council meeting in August. But just to be on record, assuming that there's support from those two associations, I would still like to uphold the police unless we learn anything significantly different. And I think, again, it's because we're looking at a balance, because I've gotten calls from families that are concerned, and I think that we just need to figure out how to balance this, and I see this as one avenue that allows us to address some of the concerns down there.
Okay, so the motion is?
To continue the hearing, to have discussion with the Court Avenue Business Association and DCA, and bring it back on the first meeting in August.
Can I add a friendly amendment to that, Mayor? I would prefer that we do everything that you're proposing, and ask the city attorney and city manager and their teams to provide some more definitive policy about this so we're not acting one by one on it. You know, if the policy is you need six feet of sidewalk length, and that's the rule by which we do it, we ought to be at a point, after many years of experience of being able to do this, so we're not looking at three people and saying, "We don't really like the way yours works, but we like this one." It just doesn't feel right to me, so I appreciate the motion, and I think we can come back with something that's maybe, you know, makes it a little bit easier on us so we don't feel like we're being, like we're making policy because they came in and applied for a permit.
Okay, so the amendment, or friendly amendment, is to include the city manager and the city attorney to review it and set policy as opposed to looking at things on a one-by-one basis? At least throw that into the mix.
Potentially, yeah.
Christine, is this for A and B?
A and B, yes. They're both of them, Komodo and Standard.
Mr. Grease?
Aye.
And I want everybody to know that Captain Waymeyer has been promoted to major, and so we-
Congratulations.
How long has that been, sir?
Year and a half.
Thank you.
I think I called.
All right, let's move on. That's 35A and B. Okay. That takes us to 36. On the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for exterior alterations to 3939 Grand Avenue, Charles H. Martin House, Council Communication Number 12-391. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Certificate appropriateness for the exterior alterations.
I'll move, I have 36.
Okay. Did you really want to speak? It looks like you're doing okay.
I'm just here for a question. Aye.
Seven, yes?
You okay?
Can I, I see Mr. Smithson in the front row. The action that we took was to continue both items.
You know, and I can appreciate that, although while we're here and I put everything together, I do have a few things that I would really like to put in on that while you go. It's finally to continue it, but I kind of feel skipped over that if you could give me two minutes, I really do have some important issues.
I would support that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so-
We thought you'd already spoken on behalf of that, sorry.
We've taken care of 36. We need a motion to reconsider, and I'm presuming this is 35B?
Yeah, reconsider B.
I'll move, second.
Okay. If I may say aye?
Aye.
Pose. We now reopen item 35B, the Komodo Club at 214 Third Street, Council Communication Number 12-401. Mr. Smithson.
First of all, I'd like to just, I'm going to try to make this as brief as I can. I know your time's important. Here's a whole bunch of photos that's basically been hashed and rehashed. I would like you to look at two of them. One is the Johnny's, that if everybody's a problem, so is theirs, how it's extending to the east. Number two, as you're talking about, and Mr. Coleman was gracious enough to put in some good thought that maybe we need, it's funny that some of these businesses are meeting all the criteria they need to meet, but then all of a sudden, no, it's not good enough for this one, we meet the criteria. I heard the officer say that it would be, first of all, somebody asked the question, "Where are these people going to smoke?" They're going to go outside. I'm telling you, guys are dealing with the devil's advocate here, okay? You're going to have the same problem outside, the same amount of people outside with a more unenforceable for the club owners without a piece to say it's ours. Guys, please, you got to move on. You can't be here than we are by not having it. And if you think what the officer said, putting all these people in dark alleys, dark alleys, dark railroad tracks, over, we've already had the shootings, and I believe the shootings had a Des Moines police officer, is the answer, God bless. It's going to be a bad situation. Right now, we've got a good thing on Court Avenue. I'm asking you once again, 20 years of my hard life working on Court Avenue, you guys are going to head the wrong direction. It's going to hurt Court Avenue. You think that things are wrong with some of the little things that's happening with the group of people and the numbers we have? It's going to be way worse when you need some body bags down there, and it will turn into that. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Smithon, you just need to be at the meetings because you've not been an active participant, and if you're going to be this vocal at a council meeting like this, you need to be a regular participant, because I know that it's been very difficult to get you involved, and now all of a sudden, when you have something that's impacting yours directly, you've come to life. So be at the meetings.
You know, Ms. Senzley, I would thank you for that comment, but I don't know how that really changes the issues at hand when we're dealing with you either meet or you don't meet. Like I said, nobody's here to deal with Johnny's, with the situation. It's just the two people, and all of a sudden, they're singled out as bad. I don't have a problem with attending meetings, and I would probably bet, since you want to get on me, that you're probably unaware that I have several emails off to police officers, that I've emailed the Court Avenue Association over six months ago suggesting that we need a committee, different people to sit on the committee, on and on. You're probably unaware of that, but I thank you for your time and your comment. Thank you, sir, for your gracious comment, too. Thank you.
All right.
I'll move to continue.
Ms. Coleman. Sorry.
Seven, yes?
Okay, that takes us to item 37. Items regarding the property at 7401 Southwest 9th, the Blank Park Zoo Foundation, A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 community character land use plan, future land use designation from park slash open space to public slash semi-public. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property from A1 agricultural and R180, one-family residential to PUD planned unit development. And C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. The PUD we have before you, Blank Park Zoo is for-
Could you give us your name and address, please, sir?
Sorry, Keith Wagan, Civil Design Advantage, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Suite G, Grimes, Iowa 50111. The PUD we have before you is for 55 acres of land that is currently occupied by the Blank Park Zoo, and approximately 11 acres of land adjacent to the zoo on the golf course. The intent of the PUD is simply to create zoning regulations consistent with the types of activities and unique conditions typically associated with zoo activities and uses. The PUD also sets up provisions and accommodates for future expansion and exhibits at the zoo as well. We have no objections to any of the staff comments. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. I don't know that I have any. Does anybody else have any? Appreciate your presentation.
If there's no questions, I'll move 37A and D. A through D.
Aye.
It's been moved. Any other comments from anybody? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
All right, thank you for all coming down. Okay, item 38. Items regarding 6304 Southwest 9th Street, Come and Go LC, A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 community character land use plan, future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial auto-oriented small-scale strip development. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property from C2, general retail on the highway-oriented commercial, and R160, one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development. Four, development of a convenience store. And C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Colby Jones, Come and Go, 6400 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa 50266. Honorable Mayor, Council members, thank you very much for your time tonight. Most of you have seen our store at Southeast 14th and Deal. We will be doing the same store here. It will be a LEED-certified building. We don't have any issues with any of staff's in the report. Just a few notes I would like to make. We did hold a neighborhood meeting as required by the PUD. When we did, we did have a few neighbors ask for an eight-foot-tall privacy fence around their property. Come and Go is happy to comply with this request. As of very recently, we did have two neighbors come forward. If I could show you on the sheet here, the neighbors at 6217 and 6219 recently came forward and mentioned that they would not like their homes to be fenced. Come and Go's position is that we would like to do whatever makes the neighbors happy. However, we did come to find out that staff and their code does require some sort of screen. At this time, we would ask that staff and neighbors work that out. Come and Go is happy to comply with whatever they would feel would be necessary. We don't want to tell the neighbors no, and we don't want to tell the staff no and go against their code. So I guess however they could work that out, we'd be happy complying with that request. The other thing on this PUD that I would like to note is that we did withdraw at planning and zoning our request for liquor at the site. I would like to note that Come and Go is a very responsible retailer. After digging into the site deeper, we did realize that we are within the proximity of a church. That code would not allow us to have liquor, so we did withdraw that at planning and zoning. Also, just to note, we do have an old store that is currently in operation that we will be shutting down when we build our new store. That is at Army Post Road and Union Street. Just so you know, when we do close that down, we will be removing the tanks from that site as well as the canopy, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you should have.
All right. Ms. Senzley?
Couple of questions. The store that you'll be shutting down and you'll be selling at, are there any restrictions as to what type of business would be able to go in there and operate?
Ma'am, we have a lease there until 2016. We do not own that store.
Okay.
And we would be subleasing it, and we would not sublease that to a competitor.
Okay. Even a second-tier type competitor?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Who do you lease that from?
I don't know if I recall the landlord, sir. I'm sorry.
My concern is that's in my ward. This isn't her ward. My concern is that that is going to be an orphaned site and just going to sit there and weeds will grow. And, I mean, can you assure the neighborhood there that that's not going to happen, or is this something you can't tell us now for sure what you're going to do?
I cannot ensure that that property will be leased. Again, we don't own it. We are just leasing that property, sir. We are not the owners.
But since you do have a lease, you're responsible for the maintenance until 2016.
Yes, sir.
My concern is it's a gas station now, obviously, so you're going to end up having an orphaned gas station.
Right.
But we need the maintenance, the normal stuff you would do if it was a gas station.
We'd be happy to do any maintenance that we would need to do on the site. Yes, sir.
Then a follow-up question would be, going back to the fence that you talked about and being contacted, so I'm pleased that you are working with the neighbors. Are any of those neighbors here? Okay, I thought maybe they might be. So have you had a chance to sit down and work with the city staff? Are you comfortable with the recommendation or the comment that Come and Go is making that you can work it out with city staff as to what type of landscaping or dividing?
Why don't we have them come up and speak at the podium if they so desire?
Tammy Green, 6217 Southwest 10th Street, Des Moines. And I have been in contact with Colby as well. I've emailed you.
Right.
I'm lost in this process outside of I know that the two properties, me and my neighbor that don't want the wooden fence, have chain link, and we maintain those. We want an open view, and in talking with Colby, he's been really good to work with. He's listened, and he's responded. We're comfortable with trees, bushes, shrubbery, something that we still have a view out the back. I also have a gate back there that I use to access those establishments. Hardee's was there. I've been there 19 years. So we want to see that left open, and I don't know where we have to go to get that done. I don't see where it's a real problem to have to fix myself.
Okay.
If you look at the diagram, you can see where my neighbor's property begins.
Which two are they?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right here, you can see this property comes up, and this is the two properties we're asking for no wooden fence. We're the only two with chain link. The rest are like-
Mike.
Old smoked fence and that type of thing. So I don't know who I have to work with on that.
Okay. This gentleman right here, I think, probably is the one you're going to work with.
Yep.
He's the director of fencing.
On guard. Bad joke, sorry. Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the city of Des Moines. Typically, on commercial properties, when they butt residential, we do require a landscaping screen and a solid or opaque fence joining those properties. This is a planned unit development, so there is some- development, so there is some flexibility allowed. I guess our only concern is that we start with fence and then along the lot line, stop, and there's a two-lot gap, and the fence picks up again beyond that. From an appearance standpoint-
If it don't pick up again, though. If you look at this, the fence would go all the way and stop, leave us two out. You wouldn't have to come up this side or this side. And then they're planning on going north right there. There's no, this isn't-
My understanding was that the fence went along the north lot line and then the west side of the property.
Right, this would be the west. I'm on the west side.
This is the west side.
No, I'm doing it. Okay, here we go. Yeah, so it's going to stop here. My lot actually goes all the way to here.
But they also have to have a fence along this lot line.
Right, and we're great with that. We have no problem with that. We just don't want this part fenced. Just, there's not a stop, break, and then start again. It's a go here, stop, and then go up the north side as they proposed. So there's not a stop and go and stop.
Okay.
Mike, maybe there might be an opportunity that you could sit down with the neighbors and try to resolve-
Ultimately, if you want to make the motion not require fence, you can do so. There's, our only position was just that there would be a gap there.
The consistency.
The applicant can agree to do that and construct in a manner that won't fall over. We're fine with it.
Okay, so what I would do then is move item 38, A through D, with the understanding, with direction that you sit down and work with the neighbors and Come and Go as to what works best for-
Excluding those two properties.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question for Candy. Taking a little bit of a risk here, but do you miss the Friday night car nights they used to hold there for Hardee's?
You know, I've enjoyed it all, but yeah, I mean, yeah, that was something that brought a lot of activity over there. A lot of people, we got the cars.
No problems.
I've not had any problems in the whole time I've been there. The problems are the bar on the other end. Can't think of the name of it, but it's very familiar to the police.
Skip Spot.
But no, I've had no trouble. No, we've had no trouble, and we welcome this to go on forward. We just don't want to have our view blocked. We want to still maintain our fences. We want what we had when we bought it.
Thank you. We'll get to that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Grease?
I will support the motion.
Six, yes.
Did he ask about a question?
Hallie, did you have a question?
No, he said he supports the motion.
Okay, sorry.
All right, item 39. On the vacation conveyance of the north-south alley adjoining 815 High Street to the Cathedral Church of St. Paul for $1,000 to correct a publication error, Council Communication number 12-394, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Anybody here to speak on this? I believe this item's been here before. This is just a correction.
I'll move item 39, A and B.
Item's been moved. Any other speakers? Seeing none?
Aye.
All right.
Six, yes, one pass.
Forty, on the conveyance of 1215 9th Street to the Riverbend Association, Inc., for $336, Council Communication number 12-395. Is there anyone in this meeting tonight, either from the neighborhood or otherwise, to speak on this item? Don't see-
Mayor, I don't know if anyone's coming forward, but I would be happy to move this item. I think it's another good step for Riverbend, just to put a neighborhood signage in, and I think it's just another example of a good neighborhood moving forward in the right direction.
All right, item's been moved. Thank you.
Seven, yes?
Item 41. The amendment to the lease agreement with the South Des Moines Little League for the James W. County Baseball Park, Council Communication number 12-404. Anyone here to speak to that? Okay, we have someone who could speak with questions. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
I'll move 41.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, only if there's questions. Mr. Grease?
Aye.
This is a great facility down there for Little League activity and soccer fields and all. It's been a real addition to that area.
Item 42 is dismissing the proceedings on the application from Lazarus Investments, LLC to rezone the property at 1100 Euclid Avenue from R2, two-family residential to limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow for a dental clinic on the property. The applicant has withdrawn the request. We have a motion to dismiss.
He had only brought this up as a reserve case. He needed another property to relocate his dental office. He's going down at East 6th and Madison. The last I knew, Chris is here. He could tell you more about it. But this is in cooperation with CVS, going up on between Second and Third on Euclid. So he's a dentist. He's been there for years and willing to move out and then relocate. Glad he moves this item.
Okay.
Seven, yes?
Item 43. On the 2012 Expanded Street Reservicing Program, Contract 1, Resolution Improving the Plan's Specifications Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate and Receive and File Bids and Designate the Lowest Responsible Builder or Bidder is Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, Kurt Rasmussen, President, $1,010,680. Council Communication, 12-392, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Shall move.
Aye.
Seven, yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings adjourn at 6:12. Takes us back to item 34. Item 34, again, is an ordinance first consideration. 34 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding the traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 12-398, A is the installation of metered parking on the south side of Locust Street, east of Second Avenue, and B is the installation of metered parking on the west side of Fifth Avenue between Locust and Grand. Anyone here to speak to this?
I'll move 34, A and B.
You know, I'd like on this one to continue A, and I think we should take this to the World Food Prize and see if they'd like to throw some money in the till so we don't have to put in meters there with the amount of beautification they did and the cost of it, and that that's the center for the World Food Prize. It may not be appropriate to put meters up around that block.
They wouldn't be noticed by the traffic, the committee meeting, correct?
I wonder, Mr. Moore, would you accept, this is first reading, if I understand-
I'm not going to wait for-
If we could do first reading, then we'll make that contact and report back to you at the time of second.
Mr. Grease?
Aye.
Seven, yes?
All right, that takes us now to two extra items. The extra items were put on the agenda following the deadline on Wednesday. The first one is a request from Council member Skip Moore to discuss gender balance on city boards and commissions. Mr. Moore?
After we receive, excuse me, after we received the printout today on the makeup of our boards and commissions, I think it's to be noted that we've got three boards that are 100% male. Two of them have one female on them, 13 males, and then the other one has one female and nine males. In Mr. Lester's report to us on this, he did point out that with the current census, we're almost 52% female in the city and 48% male. I just think that on a lot of these, we're doing an exceptional job, but I would like to see us adopt the state's mandate as a policy for the remaining boards that aren't mandated. It does give us an out, and if you can't find somebody of the appropriate gender for a position in two months, you can go to the opposite gender. I just think that, I've been told that supposedly there's a policy in the past that we look at gender balance anyway, but I haven't seen that policy, and I think that we ought to follow the state's mandate with our own policy, not an ordinance, but just so that we can do a better job of trying to make the boards and commissions gender balanced.
I think that's a very good goal, and, you know, as a goal, I support it. Even for the state law, I've been troubled because we try and do these appointments very democratically. If one person was appointing it, I think it's easier to control gender balance or specific duties or qualifications, but because we all take turns, you know, we'll be put in a position where, you know, naturally, if we want to meet that expectation, we can't, you know, in good faith, replace a person that might be eligible for another term. Maybe I could, but you couldn't because of when your reappointment came up, because, and I just think it's better to say, how can we establish that as a goal, measure ourselves, say that's a priority, it is, but I probably stopped short of saying, you know, we have a quota. I'm not a big fan of quotas. I want the best people there, and I want to respect everybody's, you know, decision, but I think we have to find a better balance than we've had when some are 100% guys, and so I'm not quite sure I have an answer to it. I just don't want to, I don't want to leapfrog to quotas, which I think might take from us the best people available to serve. So I don't know what the middle ground is.
Mayor? Brian? Brian?
I, too, can support it as a goal, Skip, but I, from my perspective, as a ward person, it is very difficult sometimes, and I know we have olics and stuff, it's hard to find people to serve on these boards, and if one person steps up, I'm taking them. You know, so as a goal, I certainly can, and I can support that, and I suspect if you look back at my appointments, it's been probably 50/50 over the course of my five years. So I can support it as a goal, but it's very difficult to find somebody on a ward basis and maybe bop and back that up, but I think it's a good goal to have, but I, it's just hard to sort of enforce it as a policy or as an ordinance.
I echo the comments.
It's hard.
Yeah, it is. In fact, the sister cities, I was given a list of individuals that were interested in sister cities, looking at gender balance, made some calls, and even though they had submitted an application, the two people that I asked said that they had done some research and felt that it needed to be younger people. They weren't concerned about the gender balance, but they were concerned about an age category needing to be represented, so.
Well, that's even harder.
Yeah, it is.
Skip, I also think that your motion certainly is well-intentioned, and I, for one, have made every effort to try to make sure we have balance on a lot of them, and I think one of the boards that we talked about before this meeting, which is the Music Commission, I mean, that's all guys, I think, and I think that we'd like to see gender balance when we can at every possible turn, and I would certainly back your effort to try to push that as a policy and a goal, and knowing that I think that we do have some outs, and I think I would support your motion.
I will vote in opposition to the motion.
Okay. We have-
So what is the motion?
Yep, what's your motion?
Well, my motion would be to adopt for the unmandated boards and commissions the same rule that we are forced by the state to use at this time on the mandated boards.
So it's not a goal?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so what you're saying is on the ones that we are directed by the state, that you want to see that as a goal and policy at city level?
I'm addressing the ones that aren't mandated by the state. We have, we're supposed to follow the state law on the ones that are mandated. I don't think we have a choice.
So what you're saying is you would like to see a similar policy implemented regarding the balance of our boards whenever possible?
Yes.
And Mr. Grease, you voted no?
Correct.
Okay.
Two yes, five no.
All right, item two is a request from Des Moines Neighbors to speak regarding the neighborhood notification process, and the sponsor on this item is Council member Skip Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council people. Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. It's come to the attention of us that there is some ongoing problems with notification of meetings and, not necessarily meetings that deal with the issues of plan and zoning, but issues of meeting with special permits, similar to what we saw in the paper last week, where neighborhood associations are at the tag-in processes, and they are reacting to issues that seem to be already decided in many people's mind. So what I'm asking you to do today is reconsider the process and look at ways that we can have a partnership between the council and staff and neighborhood associations to involve them in more of the front end of the process of projects that go on, so develop more of a team-type of a situation of these projects. It may have been with the project down on the southwest side that if the neighborhood had understood what was going on, saw some of the safeguards and some of the actually actions that were being made for a very good project, that they may have been supportive of the whole situation. But how it was with their particular situation, I also look at a situation we had recently with the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association. I look at others, Gray's Woods, things like that, where neighborhoods are contacted too far into the process for them to feel that their input is being heard. It could happen through a number of different situations. I applaud Public Works, for example, in the way that they have approached the snow ordinance thing. They have in their ways that they can notify the public, and that was my greatest concern about the snow removal projects, was how is the public going to know at 11 o'clock at night, or at 1 o'clock in the morning, or whatever kind of time there is, that there is going to be a snow, that they're going to have to get up, get their cars off the street, get them into the driveways, wherever they can manage to put them. But what we've seen here with Public Works is they've got there all kinds of notification possibilities that any kind of citizen who wants to know can find out. I know that sometimes neighborhood associations, because they're volunteer organizations, are a little bit disjointed in the communication process, and I know sometimes that emails to one person in a neighborhood association may not always get to the other people in the neighborhood associations. That is an ongoing problem, and we at Des Moines Neighbors are working towards ways that we can find that we can have notification processes with- that we can have notification processes within neighborhoods that will help their members know what's going on. But what I'd like to see also from the city and the staff to work on is a manner by which we can find these notifications, not just because somebody got emailed, but maybe because there is a website area that's dedicated to, there's going to be a meeting between Come and Go at such and such a place because of a new store they're being built. There's going to be a meeting with this nonprofit, and public's invited to this, so that they can look up and say, you know what, there's always one place, or maybe more places, but at least one place where they can find in a timely manner that there's something going on. And so what I'm asking from Des Moines Neighbors' perspective is that we work together with staff, with the city council, in developing some other alternative ways of notification, so that our neighborhood leaders and our neighborhoods can have more involvement in the process of making decisions. And I stand ready to answer any questions.
Marty, I appreciate your coming down and pushing for continued neighborhood involvement in the process. And I think for a number of us that are sitting up here who've served on planning and zone, remember our 2020 process and the extraordinary efforts we made to reach out to neighborhoods at every step of that process as we moved along. And I think that generally speaking, there has been fairly good notification, although we want to improve it. I mean, if there's some gaps, if there's some blocks that are prohibiting what neighbors think to be timely communication in that regard, I think we need to fix it. And so we certainly, at least I, for one, look forward to continued opportunity to exchange some of those ideas with neighbors. And I know that I go to a number of neighborhood meetings every year, and I know there are other members of this council, or most of us go to a lot of neighborhood meetings. So we like to get that feedback and want to know how we can make the process better. So I hope that we can refer it maybe to the city manager and staff to work with citizens, work with neighborhoods to improve that process and bring a process maybe back to figure out how that can be made even better. And maybe if we need to improve our website, that, Marty, that's a good idea as well. So if somebody wanted to make a motion, that sounded a little bit like that. Are you going to call from the back row, or you want to come up here and speak?
Before you motion, I would like to say part of what I was referencing earlier. Marty, I think you're nailing it. I would like to work with you guys on that. While I don't think the city is intentionally trying to deny people the information, there are times I have an incredibly difficult time finding what I want to know. Some type of a process, that is something that ultimately I was hoping to work on, either with the council, with the NRB, or with whomever wants to work on it. So I just want to be supportive of that, because as somebody who for the last year and a half has tried to-
Manager, I think we have two volunteers at least that want to get on this as soon as possible. So Wendy, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I think what we're doing is we're going through some growing pains here. But I would like to see, and I'm going to make a motion that we receive and file this from Marty back to the manager, and directing him to convene a committee of city staff. And we should have, I imagine, somebody from Des Moines Neighbors, and somebody from SISNA, and somebody from Northeast Neighbors, and anybody else that you think could be appropriate, and kind of hash this out a little bit as to what kind of a policy we could establish on neighborhood notification. One thing that's bothered me, and I'm not going to point my fingers at anybody, but when you've got staff saying, yes, we notified them, they're saying, no, we didn't, I'd like to see something like certified mail with a return receipt. Then we can say, yes, we did. We did notify you. Then we've got proof positive they were notified. I think that'd clear up a lot of issues. But I think Marty and everybody else has got some great ideas. Like Marty alluded to, there's a lot of potential out there for other ways of notifying people other than just through the mail and email. So that would be my motion, is receive it, file it back to the manager's office to convene a committee on this with the neighborhood leaders to see what we can do.
I might take the opportunity to make a quick comment. I think the hallmark of the city of Des Moines the last 25 years has been the communication with neighborhood groups, the kind of unprecedented notification we give for development in that area. I'm very proud of it and want to see us do a really good job with that. I do think making sure that communication happens and a paper trail of that is important. Certified mail can be really expensive, but emails give a documentation, too. And I think there's ways where we can keep track of that and make sure that that work has been done, and ask supervisors to make sure that happens. I do want to say this, and maybe the issue can be added to what's referred onto the manager's office. I think this is a two-way street. I think Wendy would say, one of the things that got her involved were maybe neighborhood associations that weren't as well organized. They were recognized. They weren't capable of doing the kind of communication and other things. So sometimes when we were communicating with a quote-unquote neighborhood association, we were communicating with a very small group of people. And I think the degree to which we give more credibility and kind of authority through notification and ability to weigh in an official capacity to neighborhood associations, we have to have an increased level of expectations from them, that they really do represent the broader neighborhoods that they claim to. And, you know, that's always been a difficult situation. We went through growing pains on the south side in the last three or four years, as we de-recognize some neighborhoods, not just, I think, at greater south side, but I know there's been others, because they didn't have that capability. And I do think that's one of the things that we have to make sure, because some of the situations I've heard about are times where a few people in the neighborhood knew about something, but the neighbors didn't know. I think Wendy would say that about her area. And so I think we have to make sure that if they're going to be part of our agents in the communication system, they're worthy agents.
The greater south side neighborhood area sure came alive recently.
Yes.
I couldn't agree with you more on the neighborhoods stepping up to the plate. And they need to realize, too, I believe there's one neighborhood that only has three meetings a year. Well, because of timeliness of issues, they've got to be willing to have, you know, special meetings a little bit quicker. They can't say, we'll wait another four months and we'll discuss this issue. And I think that the neighborhoods would be willing to step up to the plate if they understand what the rules of the game are going to be.
I think the neighborhoods need to share it with everybody, not with just those that they think will put it in their favor.
Yep.
So it needs to be spread out. And I think that they can do a little better job, too.
Just a couple of other comments. I think it's important, when this is referred back to city manager and legal, or city manager, I guess it is, and related staff, that we're inclusive of other groups, not just Des Moines Neighbors, but the Neighborhood Resource Office and others, those that have been involved, because I know that there are two different factions that are going on right now. And secondly, the neighborhood group that's part of the Capitol Crossroads, it seems like that might be an avenue for some discussion along this as well.
I think we have a speaker.
I'm Mayor and members of the council. I'm CJ Stevens, 4900 Woodland Avenue. And I'm really speaking as an individual, but I serve on planning and zoning. And numerous times, people have come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, saying their neighborhood had not been notified. And staff occasionally would say, well, we mailed it out, but there was a problem with the post office. But yet, we still proceeded to hear these issues, and there was no proper notification. So I think this is a boiling thing that really needs to be sorted out. And I know at P&amp;Z, we did say, maybe we need to take a look at this and see how neighborhoods are notified. And it's before you, before I knew it was coming here. I just happened to come here tonight. So I just wanted to add that there is problems with notification. There's problems with notifying the right neighborhood, because one business owner came to planning and zoning and said, yes, he talked to the neighborhood. Well, the lady who was here said, well, you're talking to the wrong neighborhood. We have two neighborhood organizations. But the business owner, who was trying to do business, was not aware of that, and he thought he was doing it correctly. So there is some kinks in there that really need to be worked out. Thank you.
And in some cases where they said they haven't been notified, we sent them back to have another meeting. Just recently, we did. That was the Martin Luther King neighborhood. So we try to protect that wherever we can.
All right, so I think we have a motion.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn his city council and reconvene his Board of Health?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we now sit as Board of Health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1627 Evergreen Avenue. That's a fire-damaged main structure and a garage structure. B is 206 East Fulton Drive. It's a fire-damaged garage structure. C is 325 Indiana Avenue. It's a fire-damaged main structure and a garage structure. D is 1325 Washington Avenue, again, a garage structure. And E is 1620 41st Street. It's a main structure and the garage structure. Are there any folks in the audience who would like to speak to either or any of the items, 1A through E? Seeing none, could we have a motion to abate public nuisances at those addresses? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item passed unanimously. Item two is a notification from Peckham Insurance dated June 4, 2012, stating their insured Carson's Place LLC at 65 Northeast 47th Place, Des Moines, Iowa, has sustained a fire loss, and Peckham Insurance is holding a demolition reserve in the amount of $10,500. So we're just receiving notice. Is there anyone here to speak on that receipt of notice? Seeing none, could we have a motion to receive that notice?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That's the last item on that agenda. Could we have a motion to adjourn, please? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all for attending. We sit adjourned.